All right, welcome to the March 23 meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Sean Wright has our prayer and our pledge.
Awesome. I'm going to have, since it's the Easter Lenten season, I invited my pastor from First United Methodist Church to give our prayer during the Easter season.
Glad to be with y'all and glad to pray together, too. Got my daughter with me. She's my helper. If something happens, she'll take over, okay? Let's pray together. Almighty God, we give you thanks for the beauty of this day and for the signs of spring emerging all around us. The agenda for tonight is full of change orders and budget amendments and zoning requests and all sorts of business. Help us to see signs of life emerging in all this work. Our community is growing. We give thanks for that. Murfreesboro is so vibrant and hopeful and sometimes complicated. Where others see problems, help our leaders to see potential. Where the world sees obstacles, help these men and women see opportunity. Where some people see folks who are less than, we thank you that these leaders see neighbors, always sisters and brothers who are persons of sacred worth no matter what, people who matter to you and therefore people who matter to us. In the doing of all this business, help us to always nurture the heart of a community working hard to make sure everybody has what they need to flourish. We pray tonight for Shane, Bill, Jamie, Madeline, Austin, Kurt, Sean, Adam, Jennifer, Craig, for the many friends who serve our city so well. Grant to them health, courage, wisdom, and joy, and help them know how very much we appreciate all their hard work and commitment. They are a gift to us all. Help us all to see the signs of spring together. Give to us hope which opens our hearts and our hands to everybody. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my pleasure to be able to present a proclamation that we get to do every single year, or at least I think it's been the last six or seven years that we've done it. We have the MTSU Athletic Training Team that's here tonight, and I know we get to watch, especially tonight, we get to watch the Sweet 16 round of March Madness, and we see all the athletes who are playing, but I've gotten very familiar with the team behind the scenes,
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
that not only the athletic trainers, but the managers and all those who make things Aye. All right, you have ordinance 230Z04 zoning along property, zoning for property work from day to day. So this month is National Athletic Training Month, and so I have a proclamation along Butler Drive. This is second and final reading. that says, whereas National Athletic Training Month is held every March, in order to spread
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
awareness about all that athletic trainers do, athletic trainers have a long history
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
of providing quality healthcare for athletes and those engaged in physical activity based
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
on specific tasks, knowledge, and skills acquired through their nationally regulated Aye. Item 12, ordinance 230Z02, rezoning property along Memorial Boulevard. Second educational processes. And whereas, the National Athletic Trainers Association represents and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll. and supports 43,000 members of the athletic training profession employed in professional
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Is there anything that needs to be removed off of the agenda?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
sports, colleges, and universities, high schools, clinics, hospitals, corporate and
Aye.
How many items?
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
industrial settings, military branches, and whereas leading organizations concerned with
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Item 13, ordinance 230703, zoning property along South Church Street. Second athletic training and healthcare have joined together in a common desire to raise public awareness of the importance of the athletic training profession and to emphasize the Eight. So you want to look at the electronic version and not the paper version? importance of quality healthcare, whereas such effort will improve healthcare for the and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
athletes and those engaged in physical activity and promote athletic trainers as true healthcare Motion is double second. Please call the roll. Second. All those in favor, please call.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Everwater? Mr. Maxwell?
professionals. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee,
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris? Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell? Mr. Wright?
on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Athletic
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet? Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Aye. All right, you have ordinance 230Z04, zoning for property along Butler Drive. This
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
is second and final reading. Training Month in Murfreesboro and urge all citizens to learn more about the importance
Mayor McFarland?
So moved.
Aye. All right, you have one item under the ordinance section, ordinance 23001 Salem
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll. Highway and Barfield Road, Special Sanitary Sewer Assessment District. This is second
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
of athletic training.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
and final reading.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
So moved.
Aye.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wright? Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland? Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye. All right, we'll move, thank you, Mr. Holtz. All right, we'll move to item 16,
Aye.
the purchase of license plate recognition camera system. Chief Bowen.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. For your consideration this evening as a request to enter into contract within site public sector for license plate recognition cameras, the contract will consist of a two-year subscription with total cost of $304,950. A portion of the contract will be funded from the police department's FY23 operating budget with additional funding included in the department's FY24 budget request. The police department established a goal of implementing a real-time crime center which will allow us to use current technologies to investigate and solve crimes. Under this plan, information will be accessible by crime analysts and other designated individuals at a central location. LPR technology would be a key component of this system and would allow for the identification of stolen vehicles, possible suspect vehicles, or vehicles associated with persons of interest. Deployment of this particular set of LPR cameras would be on municipal streets at various locations around the city. I specify municipal streets because at this time, we don't have any plans to put them on state right of ways or any roadways that require additional permitting. There is a current grant out that, through Governor Lee's office, that will allow those cameras to be put on state right of ways, and that's a future endeavor. As required by state law, any captured data collected or retained by our agency through the use of these systems would not be stored for more than 90 days unless the data is stored as a part of a specific ongoing investigation. At this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Would these cameras just randomly be?
So basically, we have a designated set of roadways that we would place them on. There's 57 cameras that would be supplied under this particular request, and like I said, we would pick municipal routes within the city, not on any of the state highways at this time, and we would just place them throughout the city, and they'd just collect passing vehicle traffic.
Yeah, so just randomly cars coming through, anybody can be?
It's not random. I mean, there's some planning in the placement of them, but you're right, any vehicles that go through those would be, their tags would be read.
So if you took a picture of my license, what would that tell the system?
So basically, the way the system is intended to work is if there's, we have a database of, if we have a stolen vehicle, something like that, we would put it into the system, and if it hit your tag and your vehicle was wanted for something, it would indicate that, hey, there's a vehicle wanted for this, or indicating, you know, what the vehicle was wanted to be located for. So as far as just going in and looking at your tag as you were driving down the road, it's not meant to be a random system where we just go and look at things arbitrarily.
So if you took a picture of my tags and I owed a back traffic ticket, would that show up?
I doubt it.
Okay.
Do you have any? I don't know. I make a motion to approve it.
Unless it's entered from somewhere else, but like I said, the way it's designed to work is to have information in there. There's database, we'll enter a vehicle for being stolen, we might have a wanted suspect that's associated with the vehicle, and it will just hit on those type tags.
Just one question. It does have updated technology that doesn't, the Tennessee license plate that was having a problem?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's not an issue.
Chief, I think, an example that was given to us years ago in Chattanooga that had, you know, where a lot of people had visited, their virtual, or how do you say it, their?
Most terminology is real-time crime center.
Real-time crime scene. It had to do with shots fired around their campus where they would have a suspect, and then they could be able to identify and use that to find that suspect. So at that time, the Chattanooga Police Department had really touted how good that had helped them find people, especially with shots fired suspects.
Right. And we've had cases within, that we are investigating for our city where LPR technology in other jurisdictions has helped us identify vehicles and help us with our case.
And there's other LPR technologies in town already, correct?
Yes. Yes. Vehicles are LPR capable. I know that there's some homeowners associations and individual private groups that are making investments in this type of technology.
My neighborhood has one. It's great.
Okay. I don't have any outstanding. I just wanted to make that clear. But I move for approval.
Do you mind publicly saying, maybe, or writing over your social security number so we can just check that and make sure?
Scott Brown will get it.
All right, we have a motion is second.
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have a couple for you, chief. We also have the purchase of a public safety camera system.
All right. In conjunction with the previous request, we're also asking you to consider a request to purchase 17 public safety camera systems from Convergent Technologies, total cost of $607,000, which will be funded by the DEA 21 grant. As previously mentioned, with the LPR technology, public safety camera systems will be utilized as part of the department's real-time crime center, and basically, those that'll have access to it will be our crime analysts, and we'll have a couple other designated individuals. So general permissions for the entire department to be able to access these cameras will not be given. It'll be a limited amount of people that will be able to retrieve footage from these particular devices. The goal is to place the cameras in areas identified as having a higher incidence of criminal activity, and the footage will be mainly used as a crime solvability tools. Areas of violent crime will be the primary focus, and these systems are not covert systems. They're visibly recognizable as a public safety camera system, so they're obvious whenever they're placed, put in place. Once again, it should be emphasized that the intent of the system is not to have constant monitoring or random reviews of videos. The footage will be accessed when we have a specific crime to investigate, and we want to be able to see, if we know it's in the area where a camera is located, we want to, we should be able to go to that camera and retrieve footage. In other cases, if there's a reported criminal activity in progress, we may be able to also view that scene from the cameras, but no random viewing of the footage where we're going to match it with criminal investigations. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
These are the static systems, like the ones that you'll see up around the square.
Yes, sir. These will be pole-mounted systems, and they have the ability to be moved if we see crime trends change. But yeah, they're pole-mounted systems, and like I said, unlike the LPR systems where you just put them in general areas to pick up traffic, these are more, more or less based on our crime statistics. So we've looked at especially our violent crimes, and we've pinpointed those areas, and we want to place them in those areas.
So what happens if somebody, there's a crime administered, and then you're looking at the video, and Jamie ran a stop sign. Does Jamie get a ticket for running the stop sign?
We're not going to use it for traffic enforcement.
That's good, for me.
Not going to use it for traffic.
And Madeline, apparently.
What is the DEA 21 grant? I haven't heard that before.
The DEA 21 grant?
It was direct appropriations that the city received a couple years ago from the state. These funds were allocated specifically for this purchase, and it was approved in the budget during the time that we received those funds.
Okay, thank you. Just didn't hear.
Motion, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 18, purchase of mobile data terminals. Mr. Terry? You get to do this one, Mr. Terry.
He was doing so good. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, we're asking for approval to purchase 85 new mobile data terminals for the patrol cars. These will be broken out 55 for the new cars that you approved to be purchased, and an additional 30 to be used for replacements. These will be replacing computers that were bought in 2016. These are the rugged eyes that are made to go in a patrol car to withstand heat and cold. We've seen now that these have lasted almost seven years, so, but it's time to cycle them out. The funding for this source will come from CIP for the replacements. That was $132,929, and the remainder will be funded by the American Rescue Act where the patrol cars were purchased from.
Any questions for Mr. Terry?
Would these also be in the trucks?
Yes, ma'am. We've got another round that will come for fire as well.
Yeah, because, and all our camera equipment also can fit in our trucks, too, right?
Yes, ma'am. As a matter of fact, where we're doing the retrofit, where we just deployed the body cameras, and we're changing the cameras in the patrol cars, the cameras that were taken out of the patrol cars, we're getting ready to move those to fire for the trucks.
Yeah, I know I've said involving, the truck seems a little tight.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Item 11, ordinance 230Z05, rezoning property along West Thompson Lane. This is second and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Item 12, ordinance 230Z02, rezoning property along Memorial Boulevard. Second and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have a couple for you, chief. We also have the purchase of a public safety camera system.
All right. In conjunction with the previous request, we're also asking you to consider a request to purchase 17 public safety camera systems from Convergent Technologies, total cost of $607,000, which will be funded by the DEA 21 grant. As previously mentioned, with the LPR technology, public safety camera systems will be utilized as part of the department's real-time crime center, and basically, those that'll have access to it will be our crime analysts, and we'll have a couple other designated individuals. So general permissions for the entire department to be able to access these cameras will not be given. It'll be a limited amount of people that will be able to retrieve footage from these particular devices. The goal is to place the cameras in areas identified as having a higher incidence of criminal activity, and the footage will be mainly used as a crime solvability tools. Areas of violent crime will be the primary focus, and these systems are not covert systems. They're visibly recognizable as a public safety camera system, so they're obvious whenever they're placed, put in place. Once again, it should be emphasized that the intent of the system is not to have constant monitoring or random reviews of videos. The footage will be accessed when we have a specific crime to investigate, and we want to be able to see, if we know it's in the area where a camera is located, we want to, we should be able to go to that camera and retrieve footage. In other cases, if there's a reported criminal activity in progress, we may be able to also view that scene from the cameras, but no random viewing of the footage where we're going to match it with criminal investigations. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
These are the static systems, like the ones that you'll see up around the square.
Yes, sir. These will be pole-mounted systems, and they have the ability to be moved if we see crime trends change. But yeah, they're pole-mounted systems, and like I said, unlike the LPR systems where you just put them in general areas to pick up traffic, these are more, more or less based on our crime statistics. So we've looked at especially our violent crimes, and we've pinpointed those areas, and we want to place them in those areas.
So what happens if somebody, there's a crime administered, and then you're looking at the video, and Jamie ran a stop sign. Does Jamie get a ticket for running the stop sign?
We're not going to use it for traffic enforcement.
That's good, for me.
Not going to use it for traffic.
And Madeline, apparently.
What is the DEA 21 grant? I haven't heard that before.
The DEA 21 grant?
It was direct appropriations that the city received a couple years ago from the state. These funds were allocated specifically for this purchase, and it was approved in the budget during the time that we received those funds.
Okay, thank you. Just didn't hear.
Motion, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 18, purchase of mobile data terminals. Mr. Terry? You get to do this one, Mr. Terry.
He was doing so good. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, we're asking for approval to purchase 85 new mobile data terminals for the patrol cars. These will be broken out 55 for the new cars that you approved to be purchased, and an additional 30 to be used for replacements. These will be replacing computers that were bought in 2016. These are the rugged eyes that are made to go in a patrol car to withstand heat and cold. We've seen now that these have lasted almost seven years, so, but it's time to cycle them out. The funding for this source will come from CIP for the replacements. That was $132,929, and the remainder will be funded by the American Rescue Act where the patrol cars were purchased from.
Any questions for Mr. Terry?
Would these also be in the trucks?
Yes, ma'am. We've got another round that will come for fire as well.
Yeah, because, and all our camera equipment also can fit in our trucks, too, right?
Yes, ma'am. As a matter of fact, where we're doing the retrofit, where we just deployed the body cameras, and we're changing the cameras in the patrol cars, the cameras that were taken out of the patrol cars, we're getting ready to move those to fire for the trucks.
Yeah, I know I've said involving, the truck seems a little tight.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 11, 19, the 2021 sewer rehabilitation, and this is a final change order. Darren?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This is a deductive change order from our FY21 sanitary sewer rehab project. It's a deductive amount of $603,221, getting our final contract price to $4,077,230. So we would request your approval. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Reductions, keep.
Deduct, a deduction.
Reduction.
Yes.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have any, excuse me, I have a couple, excuse me, one board and commission improvement, or request. I think you guys have all, we've talked about this, but you'll see the recommendations formally to, for two new members for the Murfreesboro Airport Commission.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to any licensing.
We have a regular permit for a new location for a retail boutique at 1440 Medical Center Parkway, Suite D, and several special event beer permits for events for Charity Circle of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce, and MBRC Foundation. All applicants have met requirements for the permit and are recommended for approval pending final building and codes inspections for the regular permit, and a special event permit for the special event beer permits.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
Any business from staff?
Right now, our next meeting will plan for April the 6th, and there's public hearings that evening, so we'll hold that date.
Okay. Any other business from council members?
For that April 6th meeting, I know we've had two workshops, one where we kicked around impact fees, Craig, and didn't know where we were at. Is that coming up in April, May, June?
I think you could be ready for the April 6th meeting.
Okay. Just asking, just trying.
I definitely, I know I'll miss it, but I'm excited about the next chapter, so, ready to move on, and hopefully, I'll be able to help the guys a little bit, even, even once I'm gone.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
We appreciate you. All right, we'll move to item 19, the 2021 sewer rehabilitation, and this is a final change order. Darren?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This is a deductive change order from our FY21 sanitary sewer rehab project, it's a deductive amount of $603,221, getting our final contract price to $4,077,230. So we would request your approval, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Reductions.
Deduct, a deduction.
Reduction?
Yes.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any, excuse me, I have a couple, or excuse me, one board and commission improvement, or request. I think you guys have all, we've talked about this, but you'll see the recommendations formally to, for two new members for the Murfreesboro Airport Commission.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to, any licensing?
We have a regular permit for a new location for a retail boutique at 1440 Medical Center Parkway, Suite D, and several special event beer permits for events for Charity Circle of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce, and MBRC Foundation. All applicants have met requirements for the permit and are recommended for approval pending final building and codes inspections for the regular permit, and a special event permit for the special event beer permits.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
Any business from staff?
Right now, our next meeting, we'll plan for April the 6th, and there's public hearings that evening, so we'll hold that date.
Okay. Any other business from councilmembers?
For that April 6th meeting, I know we've had two workshops, one where we kicked around impact fees, Craig, and didn't know where we were at, is that coming up in April, May, June?
I think you could be ready for the April 6th meeting.
Okay. Just asking, just trying, I know it was a while back when we talked about it, so. And then, we also discussed at, I guess, workshop a couple of weeks ago around the amending the charter, basically, had a long discussion around amending the charter, basically to be a good neighbor and help out the county schools and their issues with sewers, where are we at with that?
I can answer that as well. Mr. Gore presented the proposed change to the Water Resources Board on Tuesday, and I finalized the ordinance today with the assistance of my staff, and it's going to be ready to go for your April 6th meeting.
Okay. The only other thing is, is Tennessee's playing tonight, and I know that the mayor has on some orange and white high tops, so I'll just say, go big orange. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's Australian football tonight, right? I have, I know I had to apologize to the MTSU people who are in the audience, but I do have two kids that are getting ready to go to UT, so, go Vols.
Ribbon cutting, ribbon cutting tomorrow morning.
That's right, tomorrow morning, let me look, we are at nine o'clock, is it nine o'clock? Ten. Okay, ten tomorrow morning, we're having the ribbon cutting for the new indoor facility at the Segal Soccer Complex. You know, there's a lot of things happening in the community right now that those who are watching TV don't really see. I'm not trying to cut into our basketball time, we do have an hour and a half, but, you know, I saw, I'm out the airport routinely, and Bill, I saw all the kids that are out on the baseball fields now. I think we're going to have lots of discussion coming up at budget time about lots of different opportunities. Craig has sent an email out, or, excuse me, Brenda and Kenya sent an email out today to each council member, so if you'll check that about individual budget meetings, so there's, our budget process is getting ready to start here in the next, it's already started for staff, but it's getting ready to start for us in the next couple of months. There's going to be a lot of discussions. Director Duke, we see you out there, I know there's a lot of discussions that we're talking about with schools, so, lots of good things that are happening in the community that we'll be ready for in the, in the next many months. And also, if you haven't watched it, I'm not trying to put in a plug for City TV, but we had the opportunity, and, and, I'm the one who did it, but it's really the, the credit